This is Kevin Cattur, Vice Chairman of the Killenly Town Council. We're going to open the public hearing on item number 14A, which is a consideration in action on an ordinance amending Chapter 11 to modify the notice provision of the alarm ordinance. Would you want to go over this quick, Mary?
I can. So this was reviewed by the ordinance subcommittee and also reviewed by the town council last month in which you set the public hearing for tonight. This modifies the current language within the notifications section for alarms, and this has to do with security alarm systems for both commercial and residential, really to basically be able to reflect how we actually receive notification from the state police on when there are actual false alarms. We get that on a monthly basis from the state police. Our current language requires us to notify individuals after every single false alarm. We don't have the capacity to do that simply because we don't receive that information except on a monthly basis. So those that have alarms, either commercial properties or residential, when they register their alarms, they're given the whole ordinance which outlines what the requirements are for fines. And each time we send them a notification, we include that information with it. So this is to basically be able to mirror what we actually receive for monthly notifications from the state PD.
Thank you. Does anybody here want to speak on this ordinance? Chapter 11 amendment during the public hearing? One more call for anyone to come up for public comment for the amendment to Chapter 11.
And just so you know, we did not receive any by written.
Okay, there's no written comments.
No written comments.
All right. All right, we'll close the public comment session of the public hearing on item 14A. We'll open the meeting of the Killenly Town Council at 7:04 PM. The prayer, Mr. Wood, please.
Before we go into the prayer there, I'd also like to take a moment of silence. Your planning and developing director recently lost her husband there, so just a moment of silence for him. Heavenly Father, again, we are grateful that you have given us all a heart of servants, servants to those who have elected us, servants to the citizens here in this town, and even to those who work here as well. We have a heart to serve people. We pray that you would just continue to give us wisdom as we go about this meeting, that you would guide and direct our conversations. We pray this in your holy and precious name. Amen.
For roll call purposes, all members are present. Mr. Anderson is on his way. He's running late. Should be here within 15, 20 minutes. Have the adoption of minutes from previous meetings. Everybody get a chance to review the minutes and see any corrections or omissions. Make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting September 5th, 2023.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Anybody find any errors? I did find one on page 160. It's just a minor typo there on item number two. On roll call, all councils are present except Mr. Wood instead. Any other corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Adoption of minutes, the regular town council meeting September 12th, 2023.
Motion to adopt.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Find any errors? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to presentations, proclamations, and declarations. Proclamation recognizing October 2023 as Down Syndrome Awareness Month. Whereas Down Syndrome is the most common chromosomal disorder which produces an array of challenges, health and growth concerns, including delayed language and development skills. Down Syndrome occurs when a baby receives a full or partial extra copy of chromosome 21, and whereas approximately one in every 700 babies are born with Down Syndrome, representing an estimated 6,000 births per year in the United States. There are over 400,000 individuals living with Down Syndrome in the United States. Life expectancy has increased dramatically in recent decades, ranging from age 25 in 1983 to reaching the age of 60 as of today. And whereas possessing a wide range of abilities, individuals with Down Syndrome attend school, work, participate in decisions that affect them, have meaningful relationships, vote, and contribute to society in their communities in many wonderful ways. And whereas individuals with Down Syndrome should have equal opportunity to achieve the universal desired goals of self-fulfillment, pride in their achievements, inclusions in their community, and reaching their fullest potential. And whereas quality educational programs, stimulating home environment, good health care, and positive support from family, friends, and community enable people with Down Syndrome to lead fulfilling and productive lives. And now therefore, be proclaimed by the town council of the town of Killenly that the month of October hereby be recognized as Down Syndrome Awareness Month, and be it further proclaimed, the Killenly Town Council supports and encourages meaningful participation of people with Down Syndrome in all aspects in society during Down Syndrome Awareness Month and throughout the year. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman. Does anybody want to volunteer to read breast? Okay, Mr. Wakefield.
Proclamation recognizing October 2023 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas breast cancer is the second most diagnosed form of cancer for women in the United States and is expected to be detected in one out of eight women in America every year. And whereas early detection is vital to ensure the most effective diagnosis and treatment possible and can save lives, and whereas it is vital to meet with your physician and discuss your individual risk, family history, and other common risks, preventative care, and regular screenings. And whereas researchers, scientists, numerous nonprofit organizations, and breast cancer survivors are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer and providing education about breast cancer. Today, the five-year survival rate, 90%, or is 90%, and whereas all breast cancer survivors should be recognized for their determination, encouragement, and knowledge that these survivors give us hope for a better future for those affected by this disease. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the town council of the town of Killenly that the month of October hereby be recognized as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and be it further proclaimed that all citizens learn the facts about breast cancer along with practicing a healthy lifestyle, obtain regular breast screenings, cancer screenings. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated Killenly, Connecticut, this 10th day of October.
Proclamation recognizing October 2023 as National Bully Prevention Month. Whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, and emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or a group of people. And whereas bullying occurs in schools, playgrounds, neighborhoods, and through technology such as the internet and cell phones, often referred to as cyberbullying. And whereas according to national statistics, 28% of students in grade six through 12 experience bullying. A higher percentage of male students are physically bullied, where female students have the higher percentage of being subjected to rumors and exclusion from activities. 70.6% of young people have witnessed bullying. 16% of high school students were electronically bullied in the past year, and 55.2% of LGBTQ students experience cyberbullying, and 10% of the dropout student rate is due to repetitive bullying. And whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems. And students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities like riding the bus, going to school, and attending community events. And whereas children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors, in contrast to the children who witness bullying often feel less secure, are more fearful, and are intimidated. And whereas National Bullying Prevention Awareness Month is a month-long observance to educate and raise awareness about bullying, creating a safe, supportive learning environment, talk about bullying at home, supporting your community, and by asking for help. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the town council of the town of Killenly that the month of October hereby be recognized as National Bully Prevention Month, which further commits to support the safety of the children in our community. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens are encouraged to unite against bullying and to share the message that no one should be bullied. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut, this 10th day of October 2023.
Thank you. Our last proclamation is Fire Prevention Month. Whereas Fire Prevention Week is reserved each year during the week of October 9th in tribute to the Great Chicago Fire, which began October 8th, 1871, causing devastating damage, homelessness, and left the city in mourning. And whereas in 1911, the 40th anniversary of the Great Chicago Fire, the Fire Marshals Association of North America determined that the anniversary be observed in ways to keep the public informed about the importance of fire prevention. Specifically, this is designated the week of October 9th as this is when most of the devastation had occurred. In 1920, President Woodrow Wilson signed the proclamation for the first fire prevention day. And in 1925, President Calvin Coolidge proclaimed Fire Prevention Week to be a nationally observance. And whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape", the importance of planning your escape in case a fire is not just for schools but for the entire community. Residents should take precautions such as installing new smoke and CO alarms, routinely check batteries in existing alarms, have a fire extinguisher on hand, and have fire drills. These are all proactive safety measures that can increase fire safety. And whereas Killenly's fire departments and first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and injuries throughout prevention education. And now therefore, be it proclaimed by the town council of the town of Killenly that the month of October hereby be recognized as Fire Prevention Month, we urge our residents to plan and practice your escape as well as utilizing everyday fire prevention for your safety. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman. Moving on to unfinished business. Seeing none, move on to citizen statements and petitions. Does anyone here wish to speak on the public comment? We receive any?
We did not receive any written.
For that? Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we move on to council staff comments. Does anybody have any comments from staff or anything? All right. Appointments to boards and commissions, we have none. Reports from liaisons, Board of Education liaison. I don't see a Board of Education liaison here. This is a Borough Council liaison.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed you out for some reason. I don't know why. It's been a long day.
Welcome. Pushed the green button there.
There you go.
All right, thank you. Good evening. The HVA system for the firehouse, the bid should be in this month. I'm not sure if the walkthrough went well or not. Nomad Digital for our social media, we're going to use Danielson CT to tag with rather than going with Borough Danielson. It's a lot shorter. We approved the revised conflict of interest policy. We approved hometown heroes banner for town. It's basically would be the size of the flags that the town hangs now. There would be no cost to the Borough or to the town of Killenly. Heidi will reach out to you to see if we could work it in where the town would tag the flags.
Yeah, I did have a conversation with Heidi on that, so we need to just get together. And I think it would be probably good for the Borough to have a conversation with our Veterans Council for that program because I think that that would tie well with our Veterans Council.
All right. The other thing was the Borough Audiences revisions were approved by the members also. That's all I have.
That's all you have?
That's all.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Wood?
The hometown heroes, I think I have a kind of an idea of what that is, but could you explain it a little bit better?
What it is, is it's a flag with a picture of one of our veterans. Their rank, service, and dates. That would be paid for by the sponsor of the person that wants to see the flag in town.
The program actually doesn't. There's ones that are just veterans. There's other programs that open it up to, you know, anybody who wants to have a flag, so it doesn't necessarily have to be just a veteran. So, you know, it came to me from the, one of your other council members.
Xavier?
Xavier. I haven't had a chance to reach back out to him, but I did have a meeting with Heidi and kind of reviewed it a little bit with her. So we just got to kind of work out what their vision and components are with that. And I think probably either coordinating them with our rec, Board of Rec, or with the Veterans Council to really, you know, iron out, you know, what's the criteria around the program? Like, how do people access that? And how many flags they're going to do, and all that kind of stuff? Do we want to expand it beyond just the Borough area? What does that look like? So I think that's really what it's going to come down to, but it probably makes sense for it to be in one of those groups to have that joint conversation.
What, they end up being like the ones up in Plutnam?
Similar, very similar to that. They're about the same size as the flags that we currently have attached to the decorative poles. It would be similar to that.
Awesome. I think that's a great idea, and I want to say thank you to the Borough Council for coming up with that. That's awesome, actually.
I'll pass it along to them.
So those will get hung along Main Street on the?
That's currently what the proposal would be. And there's different, depending on how many. I looked at the program briefly. Depending on how many are ordered depends on the price point of each banner. So that would have, you know, have to be established as to, you know, how many we would be able to have put up.
Well, you have so many light poles.
And then also how many, you know, what's the criteria? Because if you go into it with absolutely no criteria, you could have, you know, what if you have 100 people that respond? Then how do you, how do you rank that, right? Like, if you don't have enough poles, like, how do you, how do you do that? So you just want to be cognizant of it and, you know, how do you structure that program?
I think we'll have to limit the amount that can be put up.
We will. We'll have to limit that. And then, you know, figure that out. Because we do put decorative ones up through different seasons. So what season? And I think recreation typically manages that component of it. So we'll have to, you know, just work with that.
I mean, if we're trying to honor our veterans, I don't think we should be flying their flag in the winter.
Right, right. Yeah, that's what I mean. Time it appropriately with what, you know, whether there's a certain, you know, whether it's, you know, during the month of October for, you know, Veterans Day, or is it, or November through Veterans Day? Or is it, you know, in May through Memorial? Like, when, when do we want to actually incorporate that into the, into the program of putting up those banners? So that way, we're making sure that we are respectful of the program and those that have purchased it. Because this is somebody that's purchasing those flags. And then once they come, you know, what's the timeline of when they come down? You know, what happens to them? I would assume that we would turn them over to whoever purchased them at whatever point. So, you know, we have to iron out those details. And I think working with whatever body, whether it's, if it's really geared for the veterans, then working with the Veterans Council on developing, what does that program look like? I think makes a lot of sense. Or working with the Board of Rec to develop that program more specifically. Makes, makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. I liked that idea.
You're welcome. I think that would work out well because I don't know how they put the flags around and circle the entire date as far.
Yeah.
I would think that would work out well with that.
Yeah, didn't think of that one. Remember?
He flipped the months that he was doing that because the timing that he used to do it, we used to get a lot of high wind. And the flags kept getting pulled out and flipped all over the park. So he flipped it to another month. And I don't remember off the top of my head which months he has it. I think maybe it is now June that he's doing it as opposed to doing it for Veterans Day in November. Maybe, I think that's what it was. But either way, that's kind of what they're doing.
I'll pass the information on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jump on board? Any other questions for them? All right, thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Moving on to discussion and acceptance of the monthly budget reports. You had a motion to approve the summer report on general fund appropriations for town government?
Still moved.
Have a motion in a second. Everybody review it and have any questions? Here are no questions. All those in favor of accepting the monthly report? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. Moving on to discussion acceptance of the month of the object-based adjusted budget for the Board of Education.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. And how about any discussion? I'll admit, I had a question on it. I emailed Mary on it today about the non-lapsing account. But after I sent the email, I thought it was for a different fiscal year. After, you sometimes have to put things in writing and read it yourself and realize that you're...
That part does get pretty confusing, though. I will completely admit that. That is confusing.
Does anybody have any questions on that report? Those in favor of accepting it, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And we are, 13, Town Manager's Report. If you will, Mary.
Okay, so just to give you, I tried to give you an update on several of the capital projects that we have going on. So Owen Bell, I started there. So dredging, as you know, that's been put on hold as we await Army Corps of Engineers review and input on that. That ended up having to go through there. Again, so once Army Corps Engineers provides the review and comment, then DEEP can go through their final approval. DEEP, I will say, has been responsive. They've already kind of come back and forth with us a little bit on questions that we've responded to them on. But we're both waiting for Army Corps' input on this. So our hope is that we'll be able to move forward with that for next construction cycle, for next summer. And again, we would look to be doing that after the red, white, and blue takes place, so we're not impacting that event for the 4th of July. It would be, we wouldn't look to begin that project until after that and cross into the fall. So we would look at the same timing. So hopefully, Army Corps will respond to us. The Owen Bell baseball field, so that field has been discussed for probably about two years now. The infield is, has raised concerns about the condition. It is fairly deteriorated. There is a number of inconsistencies in that play, that playfield area. There's been some independent, not independent, but there's been some individuals that have cursory looked at it. We had, we decided to have a full evaluation done of that field. So I attached that entire study that we had done on that field. We really wanted to understand what the concerns were with the field and what recommended options there were because it is, it is our high school field. It's the field that's used by our high school. And it is, you know, one of our star fields within the Owen Bell Park. So we really wanted to understand what were the deficiencies in the field? Is it just the infield that has deficiencies? Are there problems or concerns with the outfield? Is there concerns with drainage, all of that? So we had a really extensive study that was done on that. The infield, the recommended solution for the infield, so the infield is definitely in worse shape than the outfield. So the infield does need more immediate attention. And the recommendation was to do a full reconstruction of the infield skin and irrigation improvements on the infield. That would be anywhere between, the cost was estimated between $35,000 and $45,000. That would require closing the field for three to four weeks. But it has a life expectancy of that reconstruction of between 12 to 15 years, right? So we would have a pretty substantial use out of that. The second option, which was not the ultimately recommended option, but the second option was to just do a rehabilitation of what's there. That cost is $20,000 to $25,000, but only gives about a five-year life. So when, in looking at it, really, the better investment is going for the full reconstruction. So at the time, you know, we have had some conversations. There was a potential donor that we had outlined. This has been part of our capital improvement plan now for two years. We had, we had outlined in that capital improvement plan that there was the potential of some outside donor funds. So we are bringing, we've brought this, this report to that donor. We're looking to see, you know, at what level they're looking to contribute. And then from there, we'll determine how much additional capital funds we would have to contribute on the town side. But with this, you know, we were originally, when this project was put on the capital improvement plan, we were only focusing on the infield. Nobody was talking about the outfield. So this report really gave us a view of what's the outfield look like? Because nobody's been talking about the outfield. And so let's talk about what does the outfield look like? Well, the outfield has its issues as well. And while for right now, it doesn't cause, you know, it's not cause for immediate concern. The consultant really felt that the town should plan on there's going to need to be a significant investment in the outfield probably within the next five years. So, and that investment is substantially higher. It was about $375,000. So a lot higher, and a lot of that is because of drainage and the pitch of the way that property is in order to be able to get the appropriate drainage off of that field. So that, I thought, was really important to be able to capture into our upcoming capital improvement plans. And just, we need to get that on the radar. You know, this is truly one of our, one of our gems in Owen Bell Park. You know, we need to know what that investment cost is. It needs to be going into the future. With that, the softball field is the next field. So I'll be looking to engage with this company again to look at doing an evaluation of the softball field as well. What does that field look like? And at what thresholds do we need to start looking at making improvements on that field as well? Because we haven't really looked at these fields in quite some time. So the softball field is our next one. Any questions on the Owen Bell sections?
When was the last time we did any significant?
Improvements?
Work or whatever on these fields. It's been forever.
Yeah, I'm going to say that we haven't done any significant improvements. I'm trying to think through the years. I think we, we did some fencing improvements along one of the fields back in 2012, I want to say. There was a capital project around fencing. But I don't recall any real major reconstruction of any of our, of this field at all.
Well, have we ever done anything that these, whatever was there, we worked from that and that's?
Yeah, for the most part. I mean, there's been some, you know, minor work as far as re-leveling the, the baselines, you know, but nothing of any substantial structural improvement to the field. We've not really, we've not really done that. So it's been quite some time.
So they're due, overdue, I guess, is?
I had a question. How much was the study that you paid for?
It was $9,500.
$9,500.
And? And that study includes not just the study, but it also includes their, they're developing a field management plan.
Yeah, plan, yeah.
As well as they'll, it will include the development of bid specifications for us to go out to bid for the project and project management, which means they will oversee the actual project itself. So it's not just?
As part of that $9,500?
As all part of that.
That's great. I just had a question too, because I don't know much about that. So the high school uses part of it, and then we have all kinds of recreation as part of it. Do people like pay a fee to use it? Or is it just all of us that do the maintenance of any of it?
Yeah, we do all the maintenance of it. And generally, there's not fees associated.
So there's no contribution? So there's no contribution from recreation or the school or whatever?
Correct, no, the school doesn't, yeah, just the town maintains it.
Thank you, thank you.
The only thing I'm looking at, this disclaimer fee, disclaimer notice. And these guys take no responsibility for anything, absolutely none.
So you have to realize, with every study, it's a study, right? Until they get into construction, they can't necessarily know what you're going to dig up. I mean, it's just like when you walk through a building, when you're looking at, Ed, when you're looking at a concrete pad, and you give somebody a quote on a concrete, concrete pad that you're going to remove, you don't know what's underneath that. You can make as many, you can make as many educated guesses as you want, but until you rip it up, you have no idea what's underneath it. That's essentially what has to happen here. They can, we can make as many educated guesses as we want, but until we start tearing into the field, it's like any other renovation. You don't know until you've opened the can of worms. Correct, or you, your groundwater could be substantially higher than what you originally forecasted it to be, based on the samples that you had, right? There could be factors that you just don't have a way of knowing in a study. Even though, I mean, their study was pretty comprehensive, even with a study as comprehensive as this, there's just not a way for them to know it all.
Mary, on the irrigation audit, it says, given the highly variable soil moisture levels, blah, 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 it's advised that all fields have an irrigation audit to determine if the system is functioning properly? Is that part of the ninety-five hundred, or that would be on top of it?
So they did do an evaluation of the existing irrigation on that field, but they did, the recommendation was to do all the other fields. So the, as we do each field, that would be part of those fields. So it would be in addition to, so like the softly, yeah, softball field will be on top of that, but that would include, so with the softball field, and I did get a price from them, and I want to say it was around five thousand to do the evaluation for the softball field, because the field management plan will be very similar to the baseball field, so they don't have to rework the whole wheel for that. But they would include the irrigation audit as part of that five thousand for the, for the softball field. So as we do each field, the irrigation is evaluated with it.
Would they be looking for turf for the softball field?
No, we're not looking, I specifically put that in this, there is no artificial turf looking at that for any of these fields. We are only, so it, and I put that because a lot of people will read turf in here, and there's a lot of references to turf, to turf in here, but that is the traditional word for sod turf. For grass turf is the word turf, it's not artificial. I wanted everyone to be aware that this is not artificial turf.
Yeah, because I know there was some conversation around like partial artificial turf, I don't remember where.
Quite some time back, yeah, and no, there's no, no recommendation for artificial, at all.
Yeah, I believe it was discussed about possibly doing the infield with the fair.
Yes, there was conversation about that a couple of years ago. And that was why I wanted to have this study done by a professional third party, because we were getting a lot of independent opinions as to what could be done or how much something would potentially cost. Having a full evaluation like this done really gave us a very solid, broad, big picture of the entire field, but also what really needs to get done and, you know, what would meet the needs for... They spent a lot of time with our park staff to really understand what's the usage, what's the demands, how frequently people are on there, what their current maintenance is of the field, to really get a good understanding of the fields.
One other question, it says here, ongoing maintenance costs twelve to fifteen per year per field. What are we spending, do we, I don't know how you can put a number on it, but is there some?
So that's what their estimation is, and again, I didn't dive in too deeply on that cost, only because, you know, that likely includes man-hours, labor hours associated with, you know, mowing the field on a regular basis and all that kind of stuff. We don't have to, we already have park staff onboard within our budget, so that's not going to be an added cost to us. What we need to evaluate is what is, what would be the cost for any additional clay material that would have to be added to the mounds or added to the baselines on an annual basis? And then any actual, which we already currently do, we currently do fertilizing treatments as well as pesticide treatments on the fields themselves, which would all be included in that twelve, twelve-thousand dollar number. So a lot of that is already incorporated in what we currently do. I don't have that number handy as to tell you how much we currently spend on specifically that field right now.
Maybe, maybe the point I'm trying to make is we probably haven't spent enough.
No, I think honestly, I think that we have spent adequately. I think what the difference is, is what I'm hearing through this is that a lot of, I think what we'll do differently is the clay, how we manage the clay in order to dry out the clay. What a lot of places do, especially on recreation fields, is, is they, they mix in almost like a kitty litter type material in order to dry it out quickly, that's actually really detrimental to your clay. And it actually causes ponding to happen even worse, because you almost create like a cement base underneath. It's unintentional, but that, and that's, I believe, similar to some of the materials, so there's different material handling, which will change, that will change some of our stuff going forward. But I think that we have done really well in the ongoing annual maintenance that we invest in the field. But you got to realize, like you said earlier, it's been a long time since we've done this, and with the amount of use that these fields go through, eventually, every field's going to have to have a rehabilitation.
You know, that was just the point, is that had we, well, I don't know enough about this, but it's, I don't play, I'm not there, I'm not, you know, the kids on the field, is there any complaints from them?
Yeah, so the high school coach was the one that initially started the conversation of there was concerns about the infield. And there was concerns about getting it, you know, especially when it was wet, getting it dried out, that there's divot points in it, and that there's, they're losing, there, there's raised lip areas around the baselines that are disproportionate from what the normal play is. I'm, I'm not a baseball player, I don't, I don't install baseball fields. But there was a concern around that, and that he is, he has voiced, as well as other coaches have voiced to him when his, when their players play on our, on that field. And so that was the ask, was is there a way to just fix that? And, you know, can we go in and soften those edges? Yes, but it's not going to actually fix it, right? So it was better really to understand what's the real fix to this.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, there's a, there's a lot to this, and again, we haven't done a lot. We haven't, you know, maybe we should have been on, on it a lot more, but that's something, again, during budget considerations, however you, you've got to live within that means, and this may, it's just like the, the road study we did, that was there, now we have something here, it's, it's out there, it's not us, it's not somebody in town. We got a professional, you know, came out, gave us some information, and, but it gets a lot of use. I mean, that, that, and everybody likes it, I don't hear any negativity about Owen Bell, and, you know, whatever it is. Maybe, you know, from a recreation standpoint, it's, everybody else wants to come here, so we better make that work.
So if there's nothing else on Owen Bell, I can move back, I can move on, okay. Reynolds Street, you'll probably, you've probably noticed that Reynolds Street has been closed to, through traffic as we have begun that project. So Connecticut Water has completed their water main replacement from Broad Street to the box culvert area of Reynolds Street. They cannot proceed past that until the box culvert comes in, the box culvert is due in mid-November. Pending weather, but the anticipation is that that box culvert will get replaced this construction cycle. Right now, PJF is in the road right now doing the sewer main replacements. So sewer main is getting replaced at the moment, up, again, up until the box culvert, bless you. Hopefully that'll time with the box culvert coming in, they will then replace the box culvert. And the reason why they can't go past that is because currently, right now, the water main literally bisects the box culvert, runs right through the middle of it, and the sewer main actually runs right through the bottom of the box culvert. So we've had to change some of the, the dimensions of the box culvert in order to keep the sewer main completely below it without having any impact to it and be able to get the water main to pass above it without actually bisecting it. So it's been quite the challenge in that road to get everybody to live happily ever after in, in the roadway. And have Connecticut gas, have EverSource gas, be able to get up and down the street as well, too. So once the box culvert is in, they will then make, Connecticut Water and the sewer will make final connections to Main Street, and that will be completed. Coming next year, we will do the streetscape portion of the project, which is the sidewalk replacements on both sides, that will incorporate adding that defined parking on the park side and doing that small renovation, which will ultimately end in Broad, in Reynolds Street, being a one-way street going from Main Street to Broad Street. We've been, we've had communications with the businesses up through there, very positive feedback that we've gotten from them on that design. So, and I've met with, you know, we've had conversations with emergency services. Initially, they did have concerns about the one-way, but with the pole relocation on Academy Street, they can now take the left out of the Danielson Fire Station, which doesn't, which means they now don't have to drive up to Broad Street to come down Reynolds Street in order to go south on Route 12. So now they can have, they have a direct access to Route 12, and that has alleviated that concern. So I think we've worked well with all of the entities on that, but we're still, sorry, we're still moving forward.
And then that box cover is who knows how old.
Huh?
That box cover, who knows how old.
Correct.
They found a drawing, I don't know how old it was, when they were going through the records, Alex was, when they were doing the study and whatnot. And, you know, it's been there, no one knows who really built it, so we're left with a bag of worms. And this is kind of a nightmare scenario.
We will get there.
At least the street is short and you can get, exit both, whether it went out, if it was a long street and someone had to go a mile to get on the dead end or something, that would be on a closure, but this is, this is workable.
And it hasn't been closed completely, so it's closed to through traffic, obviously, but those that live on the street have been able to have full access, so they've been able to work through that.
And they're gonna, I mean, I know some of this is weather-dependent there, we're getting closer and closer to, I'm not going to say the word because I'll have people throwing eggs at me later, but, you know, that four-letter word that everybody loves in the winter. I, even just driving through there today, there is, thankfully, I have an SUV, but it's a little rough driving through there, so are they going to patch it up before?
Yeah, they will, they'll have to patch it all up and have it ready for winter.
Okay.
Right, so yeah, they'll have to make it, because we need to plow it.
Yeah.
And we don't need to be plowing up the entire asphalt, so yes, they'll have to close it up for the winter.
Yeah, like I said, it was just a little rough even today, driving through there.
Right, which is going to make it, timing-wise is going to be important, because, you know, and that's why we have to watch timing as to when the box culvert comes in, because asphalt plants close usually shortly after the, right after Thanksgiving. Sometimes, sometimes you can get it to the, about the tenth or so of December, but by then, it's not much past that. So we really have to be cognizant of that, so that way they can make sure they can close up. The next one is the bridges, which you did do the extension resolution at your last meeting on, but the one on Valley Road, as I indicated, the one for Valley Road over Mashentuck, that one is under construction. So the detour is, is up, and I did include a copy of the detour map in your, in your packet. Transparency software, ClearGov, we have uploaded our FY 2022 general ledger data, because that is our audited data at this point. They wanted to use audited ones to make sure that they successfully received it, and they were able to fully map it into their transparency software. So they've been able to map it, they are currently testing all of that data. Once that testing is completed, Finance will transfer the FY 23 data. And they will test that data also, to be sure that they've received it correctly. They then will go through a training schedule with our finance staff, so the finance can, you know, learn the whole uploading portion and be able to also verify data is uploaded appropriately. And we expect that that application will go live on our website by the end of November. So that's the current timeline for that. Town website, as everybody has said, our website is terrible. I, I don't disagree with anybody, it's a bear on the outside, it's a bear behind the scenes as well. So staff and I have been evaluating other websites for potential consideration to move to another, a different website platform one. And we're being really cognizant of, you know, what is that patron experience going to look like? You know, one of the benefits that I have is by having a newer executive assistant, and she is familiar with websites, she really takes a look at it from the, that outside public perspective, because she doesn't necessarily know what we do in every single department, so where do I find this, right? So she really can take that kind of outside perspective look. But as we go along, we may be looking to do some, you know, public information sessions on, you know, what do people want to see, and what's most important, and, and how can we, you know, better reflect certain things? So, you know, we know that calendar and information on a calendar is priority and a huge importance, people look there. And so we're looking for better ways for people to be able to identify easily on a calendar when it's a council meeting or a board meeting versus a recreation event. They don't all look the same, and you're not looking at it going, I don't even know what I'm looking at anymore, right? How can we better make it easier for people to understand those things? So we're looking at a lot of different things on, on websites, but we've, so we've demoed right now, too, we're, we're getting quotes, and we're still kind of, you know, looking at that, that industry, just to see if there's other robust opportunities that maybe the town can take advantage of before. But once, once we've come up with what that recommendation might be to move forward, I'll have to be bringing it to fiscal subcommittee, so we can determine, you know, what, what the cost ramifications might be and how that funding may look. But, but yes, that's a priority focus, and I will say, Ashley, my executive assistant, has been taking the point on that. And then lastly, like I mentioned last week, I did get a communication, which I did include in your packets, around the America 250 Connecticut Commission. So July of 2026, the US is going to celebrate, it's 250th, the anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. Connecticut has formed a commission, they're looking for a liaison from Killingley onto that commission, but with that, I didn't know if Killingley wanted to form our own commission on what do we want to do locally for any celebratory events around that signing? And maybe appoint somebody from that commission to be a liaison to the Connecticut Commission. So that was really just wanting to, you know, get a direction from the council eventually on how to proceed if you wanted to look at forming a temporary commission on that and, and how I can, I can structure something to bring forward to the council later on, you know, at another meeting. But that was the request from the Connecticut Commission.
Thank you.
Another question I have, the status of the data center purchase and sale agreement, is that then signed off, or what is it?
Yep, so the purchase and sale agreement is signed, the escrow has been funded with the first hundred thousand, so they're under, they're underway with that, they're doing, they're in their due diligence phase, so they're, I actually, they had a site walk today of one-twenty-five to take a look at it, we're in the remediation process from the ARP funding that was approved of remediating that property. So they were taking a look at that remediating process. It's really just metal pieces of crumped up, crumpled up cars that were pulling out of the ground in really one location, and some, and some old tires, so that's really what it is. But, you know, interestingly, many times when you have sites like that, it's... But, you know, uh, interestingly, uh, many times when you have sites like that, it's, I, I was talking to our consultant, uh, from Kenton Frost, that is over, is uh, overseeing that from an environmental standpoint. Typically, they are looking to see how much soil a site has to remove because of soil contamination. Um, and less about, you know, uh, metals like that. Um, this time around, um, the soil looks beautiful. Um, it's just got metal in it, but the soil itself, like, there's no, there's no sign of petroleum contamination, there's no scent of peto- petroleum contamination. None of that that we've experienced thus far, so it's, it's been a very interesting site, because that's not typically what you find on a site like this. So it's been a very, it's, it's good, because metal is easy for us to get rid of, it's not, it's not expensive to get rid of. So, um, we have a big pile of scrap metal that's gonna go. Um, but, uh, and a, and we have a, a pretty good size, sizable amount of tires that are gonna go. But, we haven't run into any other concerns on that site, so they were out there today, um, checking that, that section out.
And any status on Lake Road generating tax appeal, any, still negotiating, and no end in sight?
Uh, so I will be likely coming to the council again for, um, discussion, we'll be, uh, looking to go into mediation with them.
And then lastly, I guess, when we're talking about the website, did we put money in a contingency by looking at this, or is this additional that?
No, this, no, this is not something that we budgeted for within the contingency, but it could be something that the council decides to allocate contingency funds for. Um, typically, I do u- a lot, usually look to, um, you know, in the springtime in allocating those funds. But, um, because we usually look to get past winter, but, um, still at the same time, um, knowing how, th- this has been a priority for the council.
That's what I'm getting to, is that's
And so it, you know, and based on the numbers that I'm seeing thus far, um, I think that it could be something that could be doable within the contingency. Um, if the council felt that it was, you know, a, a reasonable use. So, um, again, we're waiting for still a little bit more information on that, but I'll likely be coming to fiscal subcommittee with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with the town website, um, I did notice recently, when I went to look under boards and commissions, 'cause I appointed somebody that the application is usually under, to apply to a board or commission, is usually right there. I see nothing that says vacancy anymore.
Okay, I will check on that.
The application, yeah.
And this is one of the challenges that we've had with this website every ti- and I know it sound, uh, truthfully, I have fought this, 'cause it sounds like a cop-out, but I, I, trust me when I say that it's not. When they push through an update, we have links that just disappear off this website. Out of absolutely nowhere, and, and it's, it's so frustrating on the back end, because unless you are literally combing that website every single day, like, two or three times a day, which nobody on our staff has time to do that, um, you miss that, until somebody says, I thought this was on there, and then we're like, what do you mean? It, it was just there, and then you have to go in. So, that is the, that is one of our hugest challenges with this website, and when we call the company to say, what the heck happened? We get ne- we get no support, none whatsoever. And, um, so that's, I will relay that, and we will make sure it's back up again, and we will get it fixed.
I, I just, I was like, oh yeah, go right on the website, it's right there, and uh,
It's my online channel twenty-two problem, drives me nuts.
Yeah, I, uh, I will say that, uh, when it comes to the website, I know that there is some frustration, obviously, there's, but, there's room for improvements. But, as somebody who's perused many different town websites, we still do really well comparatively.
Yes, I mean, there are some that are a lot more bare bones, ours does have a lot more robust, but it's just sometimes really hard to find things.
Yeah, I, I think some of it is the, we streamlined it a little bit better there, 'cause I know I've tried looking at other towns' budgets before, and sometimes it's like digging and almost needing to do a FOIA request just because of that, 'cause you can barely find it. So, um, I gotta say, we, we do pretty well with, with that, but definitely there is room for improvement, obviously.
And we just found out that they're making new, um, requirements for websites for ADA accommodation. Um, so, which I don't believe our current website will be able to be compliant with. So we're gonna have to, um, modify completely the existing one in order to be able to meet n- new, um, ADA regulations.
Thank you. Um, just a couple things, as far as, since we're talking about bridges. I remember the subject of the Cotton Bridge, Road Bridge came up a while back, where are we at on that?
We are still awaiting formal funding notification from the, uh, state and federal government. So that was, that was submitted to the new state program, that is, um, a hundred percent, well, it's funded, uh, through the federal and the state, so there's no local funding, there was, we submitted seven bridges into that program, four bridges, we got notified that we would be receiving funding notification, and we've not received any funding no- notification from the state on them. So, um, the town engineer does periodically, like, send in an email, hey, what's the status on this? And we have not gotten any formal, um, uh, funding notification, meaning we're, we're moving forward with contracting. So, um, we're still awaiting those documents to come from the state. And it sounds like, uh, with it being a very new program, they're still working out how that program, those program documents function.
Um, and as far as, uh, road improvements and water main work, uh, where are we at on the Atawagun Crossing?
So Atawagun Crossing, um, I expect that that road will go, I haven't talked to Matt this week, uh, with regards to Atawagun Crossing, my understanding is that we were anticipated to start Atawagun Crossing next week. I don't not, I don't know if that's been pushed off because of the additional rain, because the contractor that was working on that, uh, was committed to, uh, another project before this one, so, and I don't know, we did have a cou- we had quite a few days of rain there, so I don't know if he's had to push us off an additional week. Um, but I believe that the Connecticut Water Main work, um, has been, um, completed. But I will, I have to double-check that and make sure, 'cause again, I haven't talked to Matt today on it, so.
Okay.
I know that they were underway with it.
Yeah.
I drove by there today, it looked like they had completed it. Um, but I wanna be sure that it wasn't just a part of it, and they still had more to go.
And a Cana- Connecticut Water Main, that's for the Frito expansion, correct? Or is that separate?
It's, it's for Frito, but not for their expansion.
Oh, okay.
But what about normally, we let these trenches settle, so is there gonna be a caveat somewhere that they are, even though we're paving over it?
Yep.
Um, it's just?
Yep, they would be responsible for any settling that occurs in that, in that, uh, area. But I will say that I know that Matt was very focused on that, um, as knowing that they were gonna be getting ready to do that work, and we were gonna be doing our work right behind them. So, um, I'll circle back with Matt on that, but I know that he was, um, very focused on, um, the quality of that trench. And the quality of the compaction and the, uh, and the, um, pavement.
Because when they did Maple Street, they had a, a winter.
Correct.
And that was at least a winter, that's, that does a lot, the free star and everything else, really.
But again, we, so I don't know yet still on the timing, and I can email you all the timing as I get an update from Matt on that.
Um, now, I know Mary brought up the, uh, possibility of s- starting up a commission for, um, the ann- the two hundred fifty, two hundred fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. Is that something we want to discuss now, um, as far as setting up a commission?
You would need to add it to your agenda for something to discuss, um, if, if that's what you wanna do, you can absolutely do that, I just, for procedural.
We add it to an agenda at a future meeting.
Yep, okay, yeah.
We can have the historian liaison, uh, when they go into the history, the historical meeting. Um, I mean, they're already aware of it, and they could probably, uh, I think their input would be valuable for us to organize something. Well, I think that'd be more our town historian than historic district, um, on a
And it may be something that maybe your town historian coupled with your Board of Rec, maybe, might be the, you know, the mix, I'm not sure um, what that mix looks like, but again, I can look, if the, you know, the chair, uh, directs me, I can put it onto a future agenda, and you guys can discuss what that makeup looks like.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, then, we put this on a future agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, now we can bring somebody, at least, people participating, it would give them a chance tonight, 'cause nobody here.
Yep.
Who knows if someone might not be here in the future, but at least it would be something.
Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is unfinished business for Town Council Action, fourteen A. Is consideration in action on an ordinance amending Chapter eleven to modify the notice provision of the alarm ordinance. Uh, can I get a motion to adopt this? Motion has been made by Ms. Grandelsky, seconded by Ms. Barclay, uh, Ms. Gloria, could you go over this, please?
Sure, so again, this is, um, the revision to just the notification section that has to do with security alarms, um, that are, um, that have false alarms, false alarms are alarms when the security system goes off, and the alarm monitoring company cannot locate or contact the alarm user and dispatches police, and once police con- conduct or conclude their investigation, um, there is, it concludes with um, no found, uh, no, that there was no potential criminal activity or potential criminal activity. Currently, right now, um, we only receive those notifications of the list of what those fa- how many false alarms we get. We get that list from the state police, they're the ones that are the record holders of that information. We get it at the end, after the end of the month. Um, our current language within that ordinance, um, has the town responsible for notifying an alarm user after each false alarm. We just physically don't have the capacity to do that, because we don't get the reports from the state PD until after the end of the month. So this language, uh, just recognizes what are, how we currently receive the information. Um, I will say that alarm users, when they register their alarm, they're given a copy of the ordinance, which includes all the languages about fines, as well as, um, if they, if they have only one false alarm in the month, they do get a notification, and they also get the notification about the, the fines as well. So the fines are, you have three in the course of the year that are free after the third one. And when you get to the fourth one, then there are accumulating, uh, penalties associated with that. And that's really because we are utilizing or exhausting, uh, police resources for, um, un- you know, uh, for undue reasons. You know, uh, the police don't just show up to a, an alarm call, look at the building and go, oh, clearly this is a false alarm. You know, they have to investigate the entire grounds, if, if there's a window, ajar, then they have to try and gain entry to the property, and then sweep the building. And it can be, uh, it can be quite a timely, um, process for them. And only to find out that it was a sensor that the property owner knew about, and, um, it's gone off numerous times. So, um, we find that our, for the town, the, um, properties that tend to have multiple false alarms that ends up running into fine category is typically commercial properties. Um, and, you know, they do have an appeal process under the ordinance that they can appeal to me as to whether or not, um, they wanna get their fines reduced, um, and we've had a number of conversations. But this is just changing that, recognizing how we can act, how we notify of that.
Um, now I do have one question, I, I'm, I know we do have, at, when you register your alarm,
Yeah.
you have to leave a person to contact, phone number, way to get a hold of them. Um, in a situation where if there's a property owner that hasn't done that, um, do we leave notifications on the property, like a note on the door saying, we were here, your alarm went off?
It depends on if the officer has any of those in the car. And I can't always guarantee that a police officer's gonna have that, because state PD may respond, or Town of Killingley police may respond. Um, so if the state trooper has something in their car that they can stick on the door, they might. Um, because they do have some of those, but if they don't have it in their vehicle, then they're, they're likely not going to put anything up on the door. But, you know, um, there has been times when we've had a property owner that does, didn't even give their alarm company a contact person, you know? Um, and so, we end up, the, the town, the police end up being the default for every single alarm, because they can't, they have nobody else to call, and sometimes it's just that the cleaning crew went in, forgot what the code was, set off the alarm, and police are showing up at the building, because there's nobody to call. Um, that's a, that's a waste of resources, um, and inappropriate, you know? That's a irresponsibility from the alarm user's perspective. They should make sure that they have an appropriate contact with their monitoring company. Um, so, uh, so yeah, you, um, should have those. But, um, I can't always guarantee that they're gonna be able to stick a sticky on the door that says, hey, you had a false alarm, you know? You would think that your alarm company would have gotten a hold of you.
I asked that question, too, at the, uh, subcommittee meeting, and what they pointed out was, the alarm doesn't just reset, so eventually, somebody's gonna come and see that it went off.
Yep.
'Cause I, I, I had the same thought, Jason, you know, like
Depends on the alarm.
Eventually, when you, it may go into a silent mode, like the security alarm system may put it into a silent, but the user, when they get there, should eventually see that there's something on their panel that's blinking. Um, so if, if they're paying attention to their panel at all, they should see that it's, like, if they walk in the next day and it's not armed, and they know they armed it the night before, you would think that you're looking at your panel, but, um, so. And again, you know, that's a yo- an alarm user.
Are we gonna send out, uh, notices after we change it, that it's changed? I can't remember what we said, Mary.
Um, uh, no, we've been only sending out monthly notifications, 'cause that's all we can send out at this point, we can only send out monthly notifications. So we, I wasn't going to send out notifications to everyone, uh, it does get published in the, in the paper. This ordinance revision gets published in the paper, um, so it would be noted, noticed in that, in that way.
Is there a way we can have, uh, a link to it on the website as well, on the front page, at least for a few months?
Sure, I can do that.
Listen, of course, that link disappears after.
Well, news, I'll make sure it's up there, all right? I'll have Ashley check it all the time.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is fifteen A, new business, consideration in action on a resolution approving the transfer of fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, unexpended funds from the Killingley Conservation Commission, Killingley Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission, and Killingley Agriculture Commission appropriations to the Open Space Land Acquisition Fund.
Mr. Chairman, actually, I'd like to, since, uh, fifteen A, B and C are annual transfer, uh, can we do this in one motion?
Yeah, we can do that. Um, so we will, uh, yep, so we are making a motion to, uh, adopt the following resolutions, being fifteen A, B and C, fifteen A, I already read off, fifteen B is consideration in action on a resolution authorizing the transfer of fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, unexpended funds from the unexpended department budgets to special reserve and programs. And fifteen C, consideration in action on a resolution authorizing fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, budgetary year-end transfers. Can I get a motion to adopt all these three? Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Ms. George, Ms. Gloria, could you go over this, please?
Sure, so the first one is, um, in accordance to, uh, one of our ordinances, the town council may transfer any of the unexpended funds from those three commissions to open space land acquisition. So this would transfer a little over thirty-one hundred dollars to open space land acquisition for, um, the end of the year. And that, again, is the unexpended funds from those three commissions that were read off. The second item is, uh, transfers that the, uh, town has been doing for several years now from, um, s- uh, certain departments to reserve funds. And so this is, um, transferring funds from the, um, highway public works divisions, highway supervision, central garage, and the highway department, and transferring that to se- the and transferring that to the CNR, capital nonrecurring, to help make up the difference in market value. We've had a substantial increase in market value that our capital nonrecurring fund doesn't have the ability to recoup or keep pace with being able to replace our vehicles. This is assisting with that. We've done this for a couple of years now and.
Does that stay within the departments, like it's?
Yeah, so it would be transferred to highway division vehicles, so plow trucks, dump trucks, that type of stuff. It stays, yes, it all stays within that division. Winter maintenance, those funds are proposed to go to the winter maintenance reserve, and that was because we did look at, you know, decreasing the salt usage in the upcoming, in this current year budget. So moving to that. And then law enforcement, the remaining funds in law enforcement to go to the constabulary reserve, and that is as we continue to, you know, flush out the costs with the dash and body cameras and the data storage involving that, and any of the residual impacts of the police accountability bill with any additional training and programs that we have to do. That's what that is going to for that reserve. So it stays within those components, and that's why it's those specific departments because it goes to the reserves associated specific to their costs.
Enforcement is, is the CNR? It's not, it's like a separate reserve.
That is a separate constabulary reserve, correct. And then the last, the third item is the, the year-end transfers within the budget itself. So this is within the operating budget. So in the operating budget, each budget, if you recall, each budget has three separate categories, personnel, contractual services, materials and supplies. The first section of this is, you know, for example, I'll use the first one, in the assessors, the, the contractual services grouping was exceeded by twelve dollars, but there are sufficient funds in personnel within the assessor's office to offset that. So the department as a, as a whole did not go over budget, but this is just cleaning up within the departments between those three categories for closing the books out. The second phase to this is there are some departments that did, for varying reasons that are outlined here in the cover letter, that did exceed over in totality the total for the individual department. We are, we would be transferring funds, remaining funds from contingency, a little over fifty-one thousand dollars from contingency to all these remaining departments to zero them out for the end of the year. And, you know, that's a pretty standard, that is the standard transfer that we do at the end of every year in preparation for our audit. So this is our final transfer request as we close out the books for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three before our auditors come in. So those are the three year-end transfer items.
Thank you. I would just like to add that this did come before the fiscal subcommittee, and the fiscal subcommittee did recommend approval of the use to the full council.
Yes, thank you.
I have a question on the, the VAC, the VAC truck.
Yep.
It seems like that's a high maintenance vehicle. The previous VAC truck, we didn't buy one because there was no money, but basically we didn't have, there was something that was out of service for a lot. I don't know, do we put extra money?
So the VAC truck is part of our CNR, and so, but it's not due for replacement yet. And I'm trying to remember off the top of my head what specifically was the repairs on that VAC truck.
But that seems to be a higher-end, higher-end maintenance or?
So it is a high, it, it does tend to have a higher cost when it comes to repair on the VAC truck. It, the, the motor, when you're, if I recall correctly, when you're sucking things out of the catch basins, your engine motor is running at the same time. So your engine gets, gets high utilization even though it doesn't have a lot of miles driven, right? And so it does have a lot of wear, wear and tear on the engine because we have a lot of catch basins that we clean out, and we clean them out all the time. We have a very regimented program in cleaning out our catch basins, which is very helpful in seasons like this with the amount of rain that we've gotten because we're not, you know, we're not having a huge amount of flooded roads. But it does put a lot of wear on, on that VAC truck. And so we do run into, you know, times that we are having to put some money into it. But again, a VAC truck replacement would be, I think it's, they're over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I'll pay, I'll pay twelve thousand dollars for a repair on it versus two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a new one, bless you.
See, I don't know, maybe if, with that particular vehicle with high, high maintenance, do we put more money toward it, or this is the only way to do it?
So we, so part of what we do is with our CNR, we have the cost of, the cost replace, or we have the original cost of the vehicle, and we've divided that by the useful life. That's how we get the calculation for how much gets put in every single year for your CNR contribution, right? But we look at, what's the wear and tear? How is this vehicle surviving, right? You know, sometimes a vehicle just doesn't perform well. And, you know, you're, can't wait until the end of that useful life is there, right? Because it needs to go because you've sunk too much money into repair means. If that's the case, we look at the additional contribution, you know, should this be approved with regards to the reserve, the money going into the, additional money going into the CNR, we may focus that additional money into that vehicle so that way we know we can replace it sooner. If we feel that it's starting to accumulate too much in costly repairs, then we can move that CNR replacement sooner so that way we can alleviate that every-year high maintenance cost to the town in, in getting a better performing vehicle. So we look at all of those vehicles within that category and say, what makes the most sense?
Because it seemed like the previous VAC truck was, we're dumping money and we should have bought a new one.
The previous VAC truck, if I remember correctly, it had a slightly different suction mechanism that burned out constantly. I remember that thing being such a headache, and it did, it burned out constantly. I want to say we replaced that section of it probably one too many times. But this one, we went with a different mechanism on it, and it has performed well. But again, I think we, I want to say we bought, this VAC truck was probably bought in twenty fourteen, maybe twenty fifteen. So it's been a while since we've purchased this VAC truck.
Kind of where I'm going, is there enough, because it, it's, it wears itself out more than any other vehicle. And it's like, just from what I remember, yeah, we had it, it's still in the fleet, it should have been replaced, and you're out there working and it's not doing the job that it should have done, so. Or how do we?
Yeah, we always evaluate them when we look at additional funds going into CNR as to strategically what is costing us the most money. And now that we have, with having the fleet management software where they're recording all the parts that are going into each of the vehicles and all of the repairs on each of those vehicles, they can really pull out and see, this is spending a lot of extra money that, they're not just going off of somebody's memory. You know, they're going by the data that's in the, in the fleet management system.
It just seemed like that's a, we gotta have, that's a, that's a, it's a one of a kind. Like, we got plenty of dump trucks, if one goes down, there's, there's something else there to keep plowing, but this is it. So when it has a problem and it's not efficient, you know?
Needs to be efficient.
To look at it and say, hey, maybe it's, it's supposed to be three more years, but maybe we gotta replace it now.
Yep, that's something we look at.
I'm hoping, I'm throwing that out, I don't know how that, I guess that has to come around here, but hopefully it makes its lifespan, but it's got to be an efficient vehicle. Thank you.
On the, the C, where you're closing out the books and fifty-one thousand from different departments from contingency, so that is a separate type of process that doesn't affect our credit rating at all, taking from that contingency?
Correct, because this is our, so this is our annual budgeted contingency expenditure line, right? So this is just within your normal operating budget, and you're just transferring from within your operating budget to elsewhere within your operating budget. So does not impact credit rating at all. It's actually, our credit rating agencies are pleased to see that we utilize a contingency account within our regular operating account, our regular operating budget, and that we do this process at the end of the year and utilize that.
Oh, I, I think I see, it's a separate line item, it's not your general fund, yeah, okay.
It's not fund balance, not fund balance. This is planned for within the operating budget, yep.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is fifteen D, consideration and action on a resolution to adjust the town manager's fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-four compensation pursuant to annual performance evaluation. The resolution is be resolved, the town council, the town of Killenly, the town manager has requested the sum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred, what? Oh, I'm sorry, wrong page. All right, glasses, there we go, there we go. I apologize. Helps if I break out the reading glasses. All right, so consideration and action on a resolution to adjust town manager's fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four compensation pursuant to annual performance evaluation. The town manager did have a discussion with the vice chair and myself last week, and she is looking for a two-point-five percent increase. This would be consistent with the, a lot of the other town staff. So that's where this two-point-five percent number came from. I will open up for discussion, question, comments?
Would you like a motion first?
Sure, why not? A motion to accept this?
I'll make a motion to accept the consideration and action on a resolution to adjust the town manager's compensation pursuant to the performance evaluation.
Motion has been made by Mr. Gattula, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. George. I will open up to council members for discussion.
I just wanted to kind of remember last year. Last year, your raise went somewhere else, is that correct?
Yeah, last year I requested that any increase that I was contemplated for be instead distributed to the town hall unit staff because their, their negotiated increase was substantially lower than all the other employees, and I felt it was important to bring them up closer to the other employees. So they took a half a percent increase based on taking any increase that I would have received and distributing it to them. Thank you.
And I believe the year prior, you had requested a two and a half, and the council actually approved a three percent.
And I was also, because your evaluation came in around two and three quarters, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so you took less again.
So the ranking was the two-point-seven-five, that was what the ranking was, but it would be up to the council. Two-point-five is the same percentage. I've only requested the same percentage as what all the other staff was receiving.
Okay, well, there you go again with that amazing leadership. Thank you, Mary.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries. We'll now move on to the agenda.
Thank you.
Welcome.
You're welcome. Next item up is fifteen E, consider, consideration and action on a resolution to approve participation in the Connecticut Conference of Municipality, CCM, electric consortium program to competitively bid electric generation rates and authorize the execution of a multi-year agreement up to thirty-six months for said rates. Can I get a motion to adopt this? Motion is made, been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Ms. Barclay. I will add that this also did come before fiscal subcommittee, and fiscal subcommittee did recommend that the full council adopt this. Ms. Gloria, could you go over it?
Thank you, I forgot to put that on the cover sheet, again. So, so the town, the town has participated in CCM's competitive bidding for electric supply for a couple of decades at this point in time. We're getting ready to come to the end of our current lock-in for electric supply, so it's time for us to go out to bid. And my request is to go up to thirty-six months because once we do the bid, there's only a narrow window of time in which for us to lock in that rate. We only have a few hours to confirm that lock-in. And since if we do choose to do more than a one-year time period, I do have to have the authorization from the town council in order to lock in beyond twelve months. The analysis that's attached to this is what, the analysis that Adam Teff from Titan Energy, which is the, which is CCM's consultant that runs the procurements for the electric supply, this is the analysis that they had done for us back in September. This is not the rates that we're going to lock in at. They have to redo that whole procurement, but it gives us the window of what it, what's the potential opportunity. And so based on this one, you know, it does look like the thirty-six-month rate would be the best alternative for the town. It could still be thirty-six months when we run it right after this is completed, or it may only be twenty-four months, right? But this will give the flexibility for us, for myself and the finance director to really evaluate those prices as they come in and determine what is the best opportunity that the town can lock in for.
I do have one question, and I didn't think of this during fiscal sub. So when they're predicting the rates three years out, are they, what are they using? Like ISO New England's three-year forecast as far as the auction to bid power, to buy power?
Yeah.
Three years out?
Yeah, they're using all of those components and, you know, they're magic crystal balls to figure out what, what pricing is going to look like back then. They use what our energy consumption is. One of the other things that, with evaluating this, they will submit, all, all companies will have to submit terms and conditions. And Titan Energy will assist the town in evaluating all of those terms and conditions. One of the, one of the terms that we have seen on previous bids that we have had to push back on is if the town reduces our energy consumption by a certain percentage, then we have penalties within the agreement, right? Clearly, the town doesn't want to participate in an agreement like that because we're always striving to do energy efficiency projects. And you don't want to run into, oh, we can't do that energy efficiency project because of an electrical lock-in rate, right? So that's what we're looking for, and we're always trying to be cognizant of, what are we, what type of projects or programs are we attempting to participate in? So that's the types of terms that we always trying to dig through in that, you know, two-hour window that we get, or three-hour window that we get to evaluate these. And I will say Titan has been very good about making sure they point out the, you know, this is, this is a benefit and this is a detriment, you know? Know that here's the good, here's the bad, here's the ugly. They've been very good about that.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is fifteen F, consideration and action on a resolution to set the date of November, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three for a public hearing on the proposal to authorize the town managers to expend up to one hundred fifty thousand dollars of American Rescue Act funding for the housing authority elevator renovation project.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Mr. Wood. I would add, this did come before the fiscal subcommittee, and the fiscal subcommittee did recommend that the council approve this. One thing I will add is this figure is slightly different than what the housing authority first came forward with, and the figure they had first come forward with did not include any money for dealing with possible necessary upgrades to the control room, similar to what we had happen here in the town hall where our elevator project, the control room, they actually had to put, I believe it was mini splits.
It was the, some of the school projects.
The school, that's right, the Westfield Ave.
We haven't upgraded our elevator here at the town hall.
Not yet, not yet.
Don't get ahead of yourself.
Okay.
That one's got to still come to us.
It's coming, but we had an elevator project at the Westfield Ave School. But we had an elevator project at the Westfield Ave School.
Yes.
Where the control room, they had to put many splits in to control the temperature in the room due to the upgrades to the control system. And rather than having to, the housing authority have to come back for more money afterwards, we recommended to put this in there. This should cover the potential cost of any upgrades that are necessary.
And, and to that extent, we, that, the number that we derived at the hundred and fifty thousand is very similar to what was expended on the elevators. The two, the two elevators were done and the school project in the non-lapsing. So our finance director was very familiar with those numbers and the additional costs associated with having to add that HVAC component to those mechanicals. And so both of the elevator projects that they did through the non-lapsing originally started at about a hundred thousand dollars and ended at about a hundred and fifty thousand. So the recommendation was the hundred and fifty thousand for the housing authority's elevator. And again, so this is their, this is for their Maple two court, Maple Court two congregate housing facility. That's the multi-level facility. And they've had several times that that elevator has gone down. The parts that are in it right now are becoming more and more challenging from, for them to be able to find replacements on. And as you can well be, you know, well guess, that elevator is critical for that facility, critical for the residents that are in that facility. So doing this upgrade is, is really a very necessitated item. So, but at the same time, they are, they are fairly restricted by the state as to how much for the congregate housing facility they're allowed to keep in a reserve account. And so they don't have the capacity to invest this type of funds into that. So that's where the request came from. Originally, the housing authority had sent a letter requesting paving after having our highway director go out there and evaluate the paving and the condition of the existing paving. Crack ceiling would not be very beneficial to do. His recommendation was really wait a few additional years and just go for a full replacement of the parking lots. That's really, they're, they're at the tipping point where crack, crack ceiling is going to really be a waste of money. And you might as well just give it a couple more years and then let it be a full replacement on that. So he did give me some numbers around that, and that's something that I can probably include in the upcoming budget under capital for the town to consider. But this more critical item came to my awareness through our fire, through the fire marshal. And so I reached out to the executive director at the housing authority to say, hey, maybe this might be the opportunity to put in for an ARP application under an emergency basis to the town council for consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Grandowski.
They're on a tight, tight budget over there. And it's like, any, I mean, this is great. This is, I, I applaud, you know. Because they came through with the paving thing, and I remember talking to Carol about the paving elevator and I says ARPA funds. And if, if it's available, I says, we got to talk to Mary because that's a, that's a benefit to the town. That is such a benefit. I can't say enough about it. It's really, and it's a great run operation, but the rents are so tight and everything subsid, you know, subsidized. Or they're, they're matching funds for the tenants, they don't pay the full amount. And the state keeps telling them they should raise their, this will help them in a lot of ways. And that, that elevator, the, the population, up and I don't think it ever stops. It's just a constant. When my mother was there, you know, it's, anytime you run it, it's, it's going. It's up and down, up and down. I think, I wouldn't want to be, you know, moving something that often. And it's, it's held up, but they're pouring a lot of money into it. So this is a very beneficial proposal.
I agree. Thank you. Michelle?
Where are we at unexpended ARPA funds?
So the second page we have remaining unallocated right now is a little over one point eight.
Sorry, Beth.
Well, that's okay, a little over one point eight million. And again, these funds have to be appropriated by December of two thousand twenty-four. I did list on that page also the two applications the town council has not yet acted upon, which I had requested at that time, the council not act on all of the applications only because we were waiting for some of these capital projects to finish up. So that way, if there was any residual funds, the council was going to be doing one final allocation of those funds. So there was still some residual. And, you know, the town did have a very specific application process that we initially opened and then closed. So while we're outside of that application process, this was viewed more as an emergency need from our housing authority. And that's why we, we brought it through.
Thank you. I, I just want to echo what Ed said. I think it's a great idea. You know, to me, that's what the money is for. But, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
Yeah, I, again, one thing that was brought up by Carol at the fiscal sub is that should this elevator ever truly go down, they're literally evacuating the second floor because they cannot have tenants, residents up there at all. It's a safety issue at that point.
I don't know where those residents would go.
And that's exactly it.
There's no housing for them to go to.
Right. I mean, they're, they're helping out folks that, as already been mentioned, they've been told, you know, you need to raise your rates there. And, you know, people can't afford two thousand dollars a month or more. They're doing a great job of trying to keep it income-based and help out folks there to have somewhere to live. So, and also help keep them out of a convalescent home, which would cost well more than two thousand dollars a month. So I, I think that this is definitely a worthwhile investment to help, help them out.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Carol did talk about when the elevator was down, that there was one resident, very large, where they had to call the ambulance to try to get that person to the second floor. It was very, very difficult.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is council member reports and comments. Mr. Grandowski, could you start?
Conservation Commission, they were talking about their walks. They're talking about possibly, they have three different bus tours, mini bus tours. They were looking at creating a fourth one. But all the bus tours are all, whenever they have them, they're sold out. Very, very, very popular. And they're still looking at the, at the Chase, the Chase property where the forest management plan, there were no takers. So I don't know what we're going to do over there. That's getting to be a bigger issue because more.
Yeah, we're going to need to re-put that out to bid for forest management. We've gotten some feedback on why we didn't receive any proposals under that forest management. And I think largely it had to do with timing. So I think that one, we'll need to go back out to bid. And hopefully we'll hit a better timing point to be able to get some proposals on that.
And then we're looking at that. We also got other properties, but that's, that has to be, you know, taken on right away. Even some of the others, we're not doing enough maintenance or forest management plans on those, so. That's all I have for that.
Thank you. Mr. Wayhead? Thank you. Ms. Murphy?
I attended the wastewater meeting. They had one fecal violation because of rain. It looks like maybe the blankets popped and went over the weir. Most of the discussion was about increases still. They're trying to, I think they scheduled their next meeting is going to be a public hearing for increases for the hookup, if the public is interested in that. So that's this, next Wednesday.
Yeah, and I think that we're, might be having to put something on the website. I believe that that's going to get delayed by a month.
Okay.
Because of lack of quorum. And just so everyone is aware, Anne Marie's husband, Don Aubrey, who was on our WPCA, he was the one that passed away.
Yeah. A great, great person. He will be missed. The pump station that they had replaced a couple of pumps, I think they said they were almost done with that, but maybe they said it's up and running. I can't remember what they said.
I think that one's up and running.
Up and running. And then Reynolds Street we talked about. And the only other thing is that I remember is they're going to stop taking septicage because their screen went down. And they really, it's not worth the cost to build another one, bring in another one.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
Fiscal sub, we had items fifteen, A, B, C, F, and G are on there, so we discussed them all. Historic District, we met with them last week there, and that's pretty much essentially my report from them. But I'm not getting off this easy. I did meet with the town manager and Ms. George too recently. NICOG had resurrected the Holtsworth Study, which was a study on the pre-host, on EMS in the region and essentially discussing regionalization. So if you, any of you are interested, I have a wonderful fifteen-page document on really anal, my own analysis of that from when it was done back in two thousand eighteen till now and how things have changed and some of the, both the deficiencies and the strengths of that study as well. Let me tell you, I spent a lot of time in that. But I did meet with Mary, and we were discussing some of that as well. And I met with her last week to talk about that. On that, I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Kertula?
I was on the fiscal subcommittee meetings that we've discussed, and the permanent building committee had a walkthrough that I didn't make that because of fiscal subcommittee. I made the regular meeting, and they're, they're still on time and on budget and still moving, moving ahead. A lot of progress over there being done.
That's good to hear. Again, I was on fiscal subcommittee. We already discussed everything that went over, we went over on that. I did remotely attend the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission meeting. Unfortunately, coming straight here from work, I did not have time to grab my notes from home. What I can do is email my notes to everybody that way, you know, what went on at that meeting. Ms. George?
I attended the, my first Board of Ed meeting this year. Michelle covered for me the last time. So some of the new thing, I will say, Dr. Nash is doing an amazing job. The energy, when you walk into that meeting, is just, it's so relaxed, it's so uplifting, it's really positive. And she's got some really great things going on. So she, first she spoke about the teacher appraisals program update. So last year, two thousand twenty-two, they focused on cognitive engagement. This year, they're adding in a new piece that is peer observation. So Ms. Lydia had a concern about any personal bias or subjective colleague behavior that could kind of skew the results. But Dr. Nash explained, these assessments are based on the actual lesson being taught and not the way it's being taught. And people are more, more comfortable, I think, getting feedback from their peers. And I know in a lot of corporations, they use this kind of action planning peer feedback. So they're looking to see it, so it's based on the outcomes of the actual lessons. So we'll see how that goes, but it sounded like a really good idea. The National Junior Honor Society and Ms. Demoral came in. There were three young ladies from KMA, KIS. They did a wonderful job. They talked about a program called Start With Hello. And it's a program to welcome and mentor the younger students, so the fifth graders. And it's, it's, it's basically the whole, school inclusive, but the National Junior Honor Society has started it. And what they do, they showed some pictures, sorry, where they put like, like little sticky notes with all kinds of positive information for the kids. They help, you know, help them, you know, if they can't find a class or they say good morning. They're, they're just, the older kids are just so welcoming and positive with the younger ones. I think it probably helps with bullying, stress, anxiety. It's a great program. They also talked about, they, they mentioned Rachel's Challenge and how they've implemented that. And the National Junior Honor Society members are all trained in the CND Hook Promise Program, which also goes towards helping, you know, with bullying and so on and so forth. So really good things going on. She talked about being awarded three different grants. So for Title One, the funding will be used to cover summer school and SE programs to alleviate budgetary needs. So instead of putting like summer school into the budget and, you know, asking for more money, they're going to use the leftover S R funding. Title Two, grant they receive to reduce class size and for professional development in reading and to cover the cost to tutors. And Title Three, for English language learners, and that will fund a salary for a KCS English tutor. They conducted, every few years, they do the safety drills. And it was conducted with our SRO and ASO staff and Connecticut State Troopers. It's the Run, Hide, Fight Program. So the style has been updated. It, it used to be kind of scary for kids, but now they have changed it up to it's more engaging and less scary. So they work more. I, I understand what she meant. It's, it's probably less like intimidating for the kids. Because obviously it's to, you know, train in the case of an emergent preschool shooter, that kind of thing. But it, it's, it's a way to get the kids prepared. But also, they've changed it so that it's not as intimidating and it's not going to create more fear in them because they're working together with the officers. They also changed the color drills. They've been changed to a step-by-step plain language protocol. Because what they have found that in the event of an actual emergency, the codes, someone might not remember what that code is. So the plain language is much easier and quicker for people to think of. It's, it's much more clear in an emergency situation. It's important to note, KPS received very high reviews on the safety protocols. And they did make some suggestions. So film for windows to make them bulletproof. And then they are going to use some funding to get walkie-talkies through, update their walkie-talkies. So the communication is throughout the whole district, they can talk to each other. And there was a transfer request to support KHS World Language Virtual Learning Program. And there's also twenty-two students who are going to be attending classes over at QVCC. So they'll be going over during, like the end of their day to have actual classes on campus as a group. So they'll get transferred over. Lydia had some questions as to, are they going to miss any extracurricular activities at the school? Is it going to break into like their, you know, if they play football or have a sport or something? And the way it's, they have been able to organize each student's individual schedule to accommodate everyone and make it work. So, like I said, really good things going on over there. And then I did attend NDH today, my first time. And there was a vote, it was mostly executive session, but there was a vote to send out a potential agreement with a staff member that had been terminated. They have twenty-one days to review that, can't say anymore. But we did, after we came out of executive session, did discuss, there, there needs to be a meeting sooner than their scheduled November ninth meeting to discuss the ongoing issues and the no vote, voted no confidence that NICOG sent over from all the different towns in relation to what's going on over there. So we'll see how that turns out. Keep you posted. And then, as Ray mentioned, the NICOG meeting, we did receive some information, that EMS program, which I think needs to go right back to the drawing board. But there were some updates on legislation, so there were some changes with the animal services program. Two public acts that people can look up, but they have increased a per dam rate on animals that they're holding. They are able to now charge someone who they take an animal from and it's in their care, they can charge them for the vet costs. And then ARPA money can now be used to cover matching share grants for infrastructure, any community development things like a senior center, housing rehab, so on and so forth. And that's an opportunity to keep taxes down and that for the towns, use the leftover ARPA money. But it can cover for bridge match, low sub engineering, bonus funds for town aid roads, community connectivity, bikeways, trails, you name it, they can use it. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Wakefield?
One quick comment that Dr. Nash, I really like the fact that she's going on the radio the once a month. She's making herself accessible and answering questions and I think that's great.
Yeah, she's definitely decided that she, she's articulated to me that she wants to attend whenever I go on, Winnie. So she's been coming with me for pretty much everyone. And, you know, I forewarned her, I open it to calls, so be prepared. But she's been doing great. She's been doing really great, you know, at being excited. But she's been doing great. She's been doing really great, you know, at being accessible like that, so, yeah.
Could I add to that? I forgot I attended that meeting, the first one. So, and correct me if I'm wrong Patty, but I think they're fully staffed, all except for twelve people. Like they, they hired all these people. And then the counseling department is fully staffed now. And they got raving reviews from Kathy Cody, the head of the mental health department. And the bus drivers have two more to be trained and then they are fully staffed with bus drivers. So I forgot that I went to that.
It's a total turnaround. They're doing phenomenal. She, she's wonderful.
Did she give you a list or did they mention a list of which buildings they were looking to have the windows done in?
I did not see that in the packet.
That's fine. I'll, I'll reach out to her because we've done a number of those buildings already.
Oh, okay.
So I'm, I just, just curious as to whether or not that information's been relayed fully or, or what. Because I'm ticking off in my head all the capital projects that included impact resistant windows on them.
That was the first I heard of it. And I was like, taking, she talks really fast, so I was taking really fast notes.
So, we've already done it in a num-
I don't think she mentioned the, which ones are done yet.
Yeah, we've already done a number of them, so I'll reach out and make sure that we, which ones still need to be.
I have to go back to shorthand. She's very thorough.
I understand.
Thank you.
The board of rec met on September the twenty-fifth. They discussed what Mary already brought up about baseball fields. They also were talking about different capital project, they're looking to replace the swings because those do eventually wear out. Their money that has been donated for the pavilion in honor of Joyce should be going up in the springtime. They're also continuing to research and look into doing a pickleball, updating the splash pad and splash pad grass. I know they were talking about doing one, a splash pad that's more toddler friendly rather than it's, rather than big dumping water, which scares the little, little guys. Probably scares some of the big guys too. They were working on getting a grant from the Lions Club. I believe it's the national one for upgrades to Lions Park on Moore and Ave. So we got to discuss that a little bit. Fall brochures, youth hoop, they, at, at that meeting had already had two hundred and fourteen people sign up for youth hoop. So when we talk about our baseball fields being used a lot, we have a lot of participation. They said their first day of open registration for youth hoop, they had the most people, most kids sign up. A hundred and four kids signed up in the first day. So it's definitely a, a good program. The spectacular light and sight parade, as of the twenty-fifth, there was already twenty-five participants for the parade, which they were, which is what they wanted. Went over that the trick-or-treating is from three to five and then four to six, there'll be stuff in Davis Park. And the parade itself is supposed to step off at six fifteen, starting in Westfield Ave and going down to St. James. The Little Theater on Broad Street has a lot of stuff coming up. Their Christmas show is actually, they're gonna, they're looking to do a matinee on the Saturday and not just the Sunday. So they're looking to do a Saturday matinee and the Saturday night show. Just to see how that goes. And the springtime, they're looking to do the Gene Wilder version of Willy Wonka. And for Valentine's Day, they're gonna do their singing cupids again. They, they, I guess that went over really, really well last year, so they're looking to do it again. And summertime will be Steel Magnolias. And when the program they started last year with the Frozen, where they invited, you know, youth school groups in to see how, how a theater runs. They already have eight out-of-district schools interested in coming to, for, to do their theater orientation kinda stuff, so. And they're also looking at doing a sensory-friendly show for kids that are on spectrum and have other, can't sit in like a regular performance. The last thing they brought up was that they did find a rec supervisor that was supposed to be starting the second, I'm assuming he has. Tom DeRozier was, was put into that spot. The name's familiar and I'm, for some reason, I'm just blanking on. Oh, yes, so. So anyways, he's, he's in there. He took over for Gunner, who went down to another opportunity. So, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Ms. Barclay?
From the Planning and Zoning Commission, the five fifty-two Hartford Pike, the project by Owen Bell. The public hearing and the special permit was moved to October sixteenth. They're looking at trying to make changes to the project without the extra easement. And Upper Maple Street Colonial Drive, low-density planned residential development with sixteen duplexes with thirty-two homes on six point five seven acres. Colonial Drive, Upper Maple. And on Two Weeks Lane, they wanna divide lot thirty point, thirty point one with, into two parcels and then move the lot line of lot thirty to create a conforming lot. There's gonna be a public hearing on October sixteenth for a zone text change to allow a redemption center in the Borough of Danielson Central Business District. Five forty-three War Regan Road requests zone change from light industrial back to general commercial. That's the building that Bennys was in. And there's gonna be a public hearing on October sixteenth for Eighteen Ware Road and Twenty-One Pineville Road for a medium-density housing, fourteen single-family rental units with a community building on four acres. Currently, Twenty-One Pineville Road has one duplex and Eighteen Ware Road is three point seven acre lot. I don't know what it's currently zoned for. From the housing authority, as of August thirty-first, there were two hundred and twenty-two applicants on the waiting list. There were three vacancies from one death. One went to a nursing home, one went to live with a family member. And then most, a lot of it was the elevator that went down on August sixteenth. And then the fire alarm contractor in Otis Elevator, they coordinated a mandatory test of the fire shunt relay in the elevator maintenance room. And it shuts off the water if the alarm goes off. But in 2017, they received twenty-seven thousand dollars in the Small Cities Grant for wiring and installation of the shunt. But during the inspection, they found the wiring was there, but the shunt was never installed. Not good. So they were waiting for the bill because Otis was charging five hundred dollars an hour. And the estimated cost for the repair was ten thousand. And you, and what you had said that they, Carol thought it would be about ninety thousand for the elevator upgrades.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll move on to the agenda. Item seventeen, we have nothing for executive session. So item eighteen, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Grandelsky, second by Mr. Wood. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, this meeting is adjourned.